Breezy Point Planning Commission Meeting, and I will call the meeting to order. And ask for approval of the September minutes.
I move they be approved as submitted.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second and motion?
We have a motion and a second. Discussion of those minutes, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same, motion passed. City Council Liaison Report, Councilman Lilly Hi.
Council met last Monday, or week ago Monday. The had brief discussion on some options with the Fire Department as far as getting together with the City of Pequot and other, and then other options would be combining with Nisswa, Ideal Township, et cetera. Talks are still going on, and no definitive decision has been made yet, but did you have a meeting today on that?
We had a meeting on Friday with Nisswa. I will let you know that was not in their agenda, but the City of Pequot Lakes has created a new committee to work with themselves first, and then others to talk about possible joint ownership of the Fire Department.
Okay.
It's a positive move.
Okay, yeah, because I talked with Brad McGuire on Sunday, and he was saying that there was a meeting that was going on, but.
But yeah, that's at the City of.
The, the other thing was, we did have a good discussion on the short-term rental ordinance that we are currently looking at. We do, there was good discussion with the council members. We still have some more work to do, we need some clarification and more definition as far as, you know, what is various definitions grandfathering several different topics that we need to flush out. We are going to reconvene the Short Term Rental Task Force and start going through the comments and basically redraft the ordinance that can incorporate some of these things as well as have extensive discussion. There will be no chance that we will have it done by the first of the year, so that's going to be the biggest thing. And I do need to get one more person from Planning and Zoning to sit on that task force, being that we have one council member that is no longer part of that group, so I do need somebody, one more person from Planning and Zoning, and I'll get with, you know, unless somebody wants to volunteer right now.
I'd be willing.
Okay.
Marcy, you're on it right now.
Marcy's already on it, yes.
Okay.
So, okay, Lee?
Lee?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, and I'll get together with everybody, give you the time and the date that we can start going through it, okay? The, we did have some discussion on the Technology Committee, which is kind of a new committee. We're talking about improving cybersecurity as well as having training on how to basically use your computers so that you don't get hacked and you don't get phishing, you don't submit to phishing expeditions. Community Task Force, the Community Center Task Force is moving along, we're going to be having, for the November meeting, we're going to have the results of the survey, so. We also had some discussion on the addition of storage sheds, which is going to be on the docket for tonight, so. The City Council was essentially in favor of having something that will allow storage sheds to be covered, so, anybody have any other questions?
Tracy?
You said the Technology Committee was working on cybersecurity, was that for the city or for the residents?
For the city.
Okay.
Yep, for our computer system here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is open forum, we have two open forums, one now and one a little later in the meeting. Would anyone like to approach the podium and speak now? If not, I'll close open forum number one and move to our next agenda item, which is a public hearing to consider an interim use application from Sharon Thorson, 29808 Suffolk Drive, Breezy Point, Minnesota. I will open that public hearing and ask the applicant if you would like to approach the microphone and introduce yourself. Give us a little bit of background on your application.
My name is Sharon Thorson, and I'm proposing to move an existing business that I have in Pequot Lakes to our home in Breezy Point, and was told I needed to apply for the interim use permit to do that, so that's what I'm doing.
Is there anything Sharon, you would like us to know, other than the information we have in our packet?
I don't think so, I was, I was pretty thorough with my answers, I think, but if you have questions.
Okay, we might have questions. Any questions right now, Sharon is up here.
Well.
Roger?
Well, I just had one on the sewer, is that, how was the time they asked that?
Yes.
On the four, it says install new, let's see, private system to be installed new to serve this project, is it just adding on, or are you adding more sewer?
We're installing a new sewer.
Oh, you are, okay.
That was drawn up by Martin Joyce and approved by the county and going to be installed on Thursday.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? Tracy?
I guess it's wine making on the premises, that's for the, the average person to come in and make wine for him or herself.
Correct.
And the wine that's made is not really for commercial uses.
No.
It's for the individuals, and you, and as I understand it, you would expect only, what, like three or four customers at a time?
One group at a time.
One group?
They could vary, you know, the number of the group varies, but it's never, you know, it's not a lot of people.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
No, sir.
We, we might have more a little bit later, but thank you. Jerry, would you give us your staff review?
This is interim use permit application 2021-03, the applicant is Sharon Thorson, the address is 29808 Suffolk Drive, I won't give you the legal description because it's pretty long. The zoning is wooded residential, and the section of zoning ordinance that deals with wooded residential is 153.033. Sharon is making application for an interim use permit for home occupation, wine making on premise. Definition of a home occupation is the use of commercial nature conducted by an occupant of a dwelling entirely within the dwelling or accessory buildings, which use is clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling for residential purposes. Interim use permit is the same criteria as we use for conditional use permits, but with a specific ending, date, or when a specific sequence of events occur. Home occupations are permitted use in the wooded residential district, the interim use is the same as a conditional use with a stipulated time limit. The finding, the intended use meets the definition of conditional use at home occupation, home occupation is permitted interim use in the wooded residential zone, the use with conditions would conform to the comprehensive plan, use is compatible with the existing neighborhood, the use would not be injurious to public health, safety, welfare, decency, order, comfort, convenience, appearance, or prosperity. Use is consistent with 153.119 conditional use, and the use is consistent with 153.124 interim use. If approved, staff would offer the following conditions of approval, no outside storage, no signage, maximum number of employees, I think is something that maybe we should ask the applicant if there are going to be employees and what the maximum number would be, rather than establishing them without some conference. All activities to be within the accessory structure, no accumulation of guard, garbage. The interim use permit be limited to wine making on premises only, the interim use permit to expire 12/31/2026, and we should ask the applicant for some proposed hours of operation. Staff would recommend approval with conditions.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, I will ask for public input, if anyone has input to this application, would you come to the podium and introduce yourself? Guess we have none. I will then close the public hearing and move to our next agenda item, which is official action on this application. We have a couple of questions to ask you, the applicant, maximum number of employees.
Just myself.
Just yourself, okay.
Or maybe him.
Of course, him.
Joe, you need to have her come up to the microphone to answer the questions, so.
I'm sorry, yes.
Just myself.
And hours of operation?
I'm moving this so I can just be open by appointment only, so I'm not going to have regular business hours right now. My store is open 10 to 3, but, six days a week, but that's not my intention here, I just want to be open for appointments, so.
Is there a earliest and latest start that we could establish?
I guess I've gone as early as eight, but I could do that, but I kind of, then that would restrict me from telling somebody I can't do it if they got off work at 6:00 or, I don't, I don't know what would you.
Yep.
Patrick?
We have the noise ordinance in place, and that's quiet hours from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, if that helps you, saying that you would be done by 10:00 PM?
Oh, definitely.
See, that's what they were kind of looking for.
Okay, thank you, I would definitely be done by then.
So that 7 to 10 timeframe would be reasonable?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, Sharon's up here, any other questions, Roger?
Vehicles, someplace it says 10 vehicles, is that a?
We have a really long driveway, and we already have space up by the pole shed that would accommodate, but I've never had more than three vehicles in front of my shop that are actually in my store at the same time, so I don't have that big of groups that would ever have more than 10 cars there, I just said that's probably how many we could put up there, but.
Good. Marcy?
No other questions?
Lee?
I'm not too familiar with the wine making there, but how does that work, you get a group of people to come in, I mean, obviously is it more than one night per visit?
They come in the first time and mix it, and that takes like 10 or 15 minutes, and then they come back four to six weeks later and bottle, and that's about an hour.
Okay.
Long process.
And then it's ready to drink, Sharon?
Some, some kits are ready to drink right away, others require, but they take it, after it's bottled, they take it up home with them, and then some requires additional aging after that before they can drink it.
Tracy?
Two questions, is there any actual consumption of the wine on the property?
I am allowed to have tastings.
Tasting?
Mm-hmm.
So, you're not going to have a group in there sloshing down bottles of wine?
No.
Okay, and the second question was, you indicate it will be dumped into a private sewer system, is that something similar to, I mean, nothing will go out into the city sewer, is that correct, it's all?
No, I, we have a private.
Private being like a mine, mound, or?
No, there's.
A drain field, or?
A holding, taking a drain field, right?
Okay, okay.
Tom?
I will have to say, this is one of the better applications, I think I've read, it's very complete.
Thank you.
I think you did a very good job on that. As far as what is the typical batch that you would be making? Is it like five gallons or 100 gallons?
There are six gallon kits.
Six gallon batches, okay.
Yep, they're all six gallons.
You wouldn't be having, you know, huge?
No.
200 gallon vats?
Just a six gallon bill, that's all I have.
Okay, we have a staff recommendation on this application, I would entertain a motion.
I do have one question on the conditions of approval, I just have a question of regarding the sign, is that, like, I can't even put a sign by the door that says, I mean, how would people, I mean, I don't want a sign out at the road, I don't want anything out, you know, Dove or Suffolk, but I would like to put a sign, you know, like on the west side where they enter to know where they're going, or if I can put one on the south side that faces only us, it wouldn't be seen by anyone else except for the customer when they're driving up into our driveway.
Your reaction to that, Jerry?
I think the intent is that roadside sign, it would not be something that would be allowed, but yet, an identification sign on the building is something that I think would be allowed without even a permit, quite frankly. The intent is so that we don't clutter up the roadways.
Exactly, totally understand.
Makes residential with commercial uses.
Mm-hmm, perfect, I'd be fine with that.
Thank you, Sharon. I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve this, and I would suggest, and my motion would be that the signage be limited to a certain size.
Yep, four by eight, 32 square feet.
Sounds good to me.
That's what's in the application.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. Here it says no signage, so it would be signage as requested by the applicant on the building.
Yep. The no signage was referring to out on the street, and the sign that would go on the side of the pole barn or wherever they're going to have the deal is allowed.
Okay. Anyway, I would move that this be approved with the conditions of no outside storage, signage as you just said on the, on the building, maximum employees, two, all activities to be within accessory structure, no accumulation of garbage, interim use permit limited to wine making on premise, and the expiration would be 12/31/2026, hours of operation, would we say 7:00 AM, between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM?
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion.
I think it'd be a nice addition to the area, myself.
I agree.
Okay. Call for the question, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same, motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're all welcome.
Oh, that's a good invitation. Next on the agenda is a clarification of action we have taken in the past on an application from Peter Schroder. Jerry, do you want to kind of introduce this subject?
I will try. There was a variance application for a setback from the septic system and a storage building was made back, I believe, in May or April, public hearing was made, was held in April to consider, was reconsidered again in May, and the resolution approving setback for septic and a 10 by 12 water-oriented structure was approved. There was also an additional storage structure not to exceed 60 square feet was also allowed. Mr. Schroder has since submitted an application for a 116 square foot storage building and a 56 foot storage building that would both be considered water-oriented storage structures. Mr. Schroder contends that the literal reading of the resolution allows for both structures. I think the original application we saw is that second one right there. When we saw the application, we notified Mr. Schroder that we could approve the one structure, but not the second one, because we didn't believe it met the terms of what the Planning Commission had approved. We then had a conversation with Mr. Schroder, and we, we talked through the process, and I offered him the opportunity to come before you again to seek some clarification as far as what you would or would not allow. With that, I would suggest that, I think Mr. Schroder's got a couple of exhibits that he would like to show you, and visit with you about the application.
Peter, would you come to the podium and reintroduce yourself to us?
Yes, yes, of course, my name is Peter Schroder, my wife Leslie and I own the property at 32656 Timber Lane Point. As Jerry said, we've, we were here a couple of times earlier, earlier in the year, and variance was passed, I think it was on the May 11th, noting, noting that there was two structures that were allowed on, on the property. I will, let's see if I can get these corners right. Did I get it right? I did get it right. So what, when, when I read the variance, it talked about, and I don't think we're here to talk about the 120 square foot water-oriented structure, I believe, I think the, the building that we're talking about tonight is the less than 60 square foot structure. And when I went back and I took a look at, at the variance for the, for the property, it did state that the 60 square foot structure was allowed on the property without, without condition to, to location or, or only, and, well, that was allowed on the property. What I'm showing here tonight with this, with this exhibit, the dark green area illustrates the location of the ordinary high water line setback, the blue area to the right or to the east indicates a 10-foot setback from the easterly property line. As, as discussed back in May, the location of this area has the densest foliage in a leaf-on condition, which is a condition of your, of the, of the ordinance for the intent of these structures for sightlines from the lake, viewing it from the boats and traffic. And as, as we go, as we go through this, I'm going to back up for, for just a second, the, the submission, I'll admit this, the submission that I, that I did send in to Jerry did have a much broader roof line, which in going back and rereading ordinances, were allowed to have the 18-inch overhang on the, on the perimeter of each structure, so to connect these would not have been in alignment with, with the variance, it would have created a much bigger structure. I wanted to come back tonight to you with structures that were distinctly separate. And so that, those are the exhibits that I have for you, for you tonight. The first is they still, they still have a similar, could maybe zoom out just a bit, there we go, that they have, they're, they're, they're distinctly different, or distinctly separate, you can see the dash line is the 18-inch overhang for the, for the roof line. From the, from the roadside, what we are doing is we're nasseling those sheds back into the, back into the hill, which gives them a much shorter stature from the road. In addition, the green shade that you see there is the 18, or the 24-inch high vegetation that'll be growing on top of the mound system, so again, foreshortening from the road, foreshortening that, what's on, what you're seeing from, from the roadway. From, from the lakeside, that's the elevation from the lakeside, so we're taking, we're taking care to make sure that the materials there are carefully selected, the stone, the wood, and not, not offensive materials. Looking down, looking down the shore, and I don't know if, if any of the commission has been back to the property, but we've staked the location of the ordinary high water line setback, and you can see that area off in this, in this blue line. Tried to be really careful about showing where these sheds would be located in scale, looking down that western shore, or that, that, that western view, but there is a four-foot 10 and a half setback from the ordinary high water line to these structures. And you can see, these are, these are the stakes for the ordinary high water marks.
Peter, that existing shed gets eliminated? Peter, that existing shed gets eliminated?
At some point in time, that existing shed would get eliminated. My goal is, you know, we're here to talk about what the preference is for the shoreline, right? My goal would be that we take that material that's within that shed and we put it in the little 60 square foot shed and we get it out of that ordinary high water zone. That would be my preference. When we talk about sightlines from the lake, again, trying to estimate where these sheds might be, but there's a natural break in the trees along that shoreline. And you can see that natural break in the existing picture down below. So what we're trying to do is to capture that location and tuck both sheds back behind the leaf on foliage on either side of that. Again, to minimize the amount of exposure to the lake. I think this location is pretty accurate. You can see the little pink post in the lower corner for the property. I've estimated where that setback line would be based on some of the little green posts or little green vents from the mound system. So again, I believe that these are pretty accurate locations in dimension and height. And that is, and that's it. Any questions on the exhibits that I've shared with you tonight?
Roger?
No.
Marcy?
I have a question.
I have a question, and I don't have it in front of me, but I think in one of the kind of the drawings of the sheds, did I see that right? There's concrete. They're going to be built on concrete?
It would be a concrete pad with inside of the, for the floor of the structure.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, can you pour concrete that close to the watermark?
I believe you can. We don't stipulate that you can't.
Okay.
Most people don't because they like the portability of the shed.
Right, okay. I just didn't know if there was a, you know, a technical clamp to be on a, you know, four by fours or whatever.
I think that's, if it's a concern of the commission, you know, I think you could make that a condition of any approval, quite frankly. I think the ordinance is pretty vague about that, about the foundation.
I will add an additional comment to that. The reason that there is concrete there is for the retaining wall on the backside of those sheds. The goal here is to take those sheds and to push them back as far away from the ordinary high watermark as we possibly can. And to do that, there's the need for the concrete retaining wall. And if the masons are in there pouring that wall, it's not much more money for them to pour a concrete slab, as you can imagine. They've already mobilized. And again, it pushes it farther away from that ordinary high watermark.
Tracy? Tom?
No, all of this transpired before I was even involved, so I know very little about it, really ask any intelligent questions.
Okay. Jerry, could you help us understand what our task is with this?
Okay, Steph, when we got the original application, which you have a copy of in your packet, Steph was very concerned that when the hearing was held, there was, and I'm going to use rough numbers, but there was a larger storage facility proposed within that 20 foot from the OHW. The indication from the planning commission at the time that that was approved was that they didn't want that big of a structure that close to the lake, but they recognized that Mr. Schroeder had a need for some extra storage. And they basically said, well, you can have a smaller storage shed up to 60 square feet on some other place on the property. That was what Steph understood and that was what we believe was correct. When we got the application, there was two sheds back to back. And it was almost like, well, you're really not, you're just kind of circumventing what the commission told you earlier because they didn't want that big of a shed that close to the OHW. I think the indication at the time of the hearing was that the shed be located closer to the Timberline Point Road in someplace not as close to the water. Technically, there's only one water oriented structure 10 by 12 that's allowed in that setback line. This is a very unique situation because that piece of property doesn't have any setbacks or it doesn't conform to any setbacks. So anything is a special type consideration. But that was the confusion. I think Mr. Schroeder has presented a different option that we did not see prior to this evening. And I think he's asking you to approve basically the second shed in that location that he's proposing on that drawing that's on the board today. You can approve that. You can say that wasn't our intention. Our intention was something else. I think you have some leeway to make a decision one way or the other. Does that help clarify it?
Were you going to ask a question, Roger?
I know, when it was approved originally, we tried to find another spot for this thing, this shed. And over by the LP tank wasn't feasible. So I think that's why we approved the 120, hoping the little one would be tucked over by the LP tank. And I can see that be a little bit of a difficult task to do. But now that he took the continuous roof off, it does look better for, my thought, you know, I don't know what the rest of you guys think.
Maybe we could just continue with comments if you have any. Marcy?
Yeah, I mean, I applied the diagram and how you've designed it. It's aesthetically pleasing. I can see that. The concern, I believe, that we brought forth before was just being that close to the water's edge and having one water structure, which is a separate definition than a separate structure on the property that would not be within that water's area. Have you looked at other locations for it? And if so, what other locations, was there a reason other locations that were not a water storage area were not considered for this?
Let me back up for just a second and maybe I'd like a point of clarification. And maybe Jerry can add that. Is, can you help me understand why the second structure is, meets the classifications of a water oriented structure?
Well, anything that's in the setback.
Okay.
Typically, tipping nothing would be allowed within that setback regulation.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
There's only one water oriented structure that's allowed within that septic.
Okay.
This specific piece of property is so
Thin.
Too small. It's too small to build so much on it, quite frankly.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. I thank you for that clarification. And so it's it's about proximity of the let me back up. Yes, we have looked at other locations on the property. And as a matter of fact, we've looked at it over in this area as well. But when we went back and we looked at the the intent of what the water oriented structures are, which is about shielding the view of the shed from the lake, there is a much taller canopy of trees over here, which means the sightlines of the lake are much greater. And so struggling to meet, I shouldn't say struggling, but the intent to meet that requirement of concealing the view from the lake was important to us, which is why that's tucked over kind of underneath the canopy of the existing trees where the foliage is much more dense. And that's also true, I don't know if any of the commission has been by since we've completed the retaining wall in the mound system. But that also opens up, the trees that are in here also have a much higher canopy than what is off on the eastern edge of the lot.
Lee?
So the old drain field, that's probably not on there right now, or is that, oh, it says existing?
This location is the existing drain field.
Okay. And then the new, well, the new one is up, correct?
The new one is up and the drain field is right there.
Okay. So now that, the old drain field, does that get, do you still use that or does that get abandoned or?
That's been removed.
Okay, so it's completely gone, okay.
And I agree. I know that, again, it's the same, it's that same discussion in this zone as it is in this zone. And it's the sightlines from the lake. And the other part to this is when you drive down that Timberline Point to nestle these back into that existing hill, really foreshortens that northern elevation for the neighbors. So it just doesn't feel as daunting on the site. You put a 12 foot shed where it's mostly flat, that's going to feel a lot more like a garage. And I know that we talked at length about whether this was going to be a garage. And it's not, neither of them.
There are no garage doors in these proposed structures?
No, they're 42 inch high by seven foot high doors, swing doors. Nope.
Tracy?
No questions.
Tom?
No, like I said, this is essentially from before my time. I do have one question though, in looking at the drawing. You show a retaining wall going down into the, below the ordinary high watermark?
That is, that's a discussion that Jerry and I had, and that was incorrectly shown. And it's actually labeled as a future, but we are not doing any work inside that ordinary high water line.
Okay, that was, because I was looking at the drawing. Okay. Not to worry.
We need to provide some direction, so I would entertain, oh, I'm sorry, Jerry?
Just a comment. Some of these lots, and I think you're going to see some more of these folks down the line. Not necessarily the Schroeders, but I think you're going to see some other folks from Timberline Point. And it begs the question about how much development should you really allow on a small lot that really can't support a lot of development? It's, and that puts you folks in a very tough position versus the wants and the needs of the owner versus the, what's the best solution for the total city? I can see folks looking at this proposal and if you approve the second structure down there, better have some good reasons why you're proposing it that close to the water line. Otherwise, you're going to have lots of folks wanting two or three of those type of sheds close to the water. And it won't make any difference whether this lot was smaller, their lot is large. They're going to point to this and they're going to say, this is something that you allowed, you should allow me to have the same opportunity.
One other question, Jerry. During the application on the original variance, did you have comments from neighbors at all?
I believe there were some neighbors that were favorable to what the Schroeders were proposing.
Okay.
The neighbors to the west, Kathy and Rob Priggy. There's a letter on file with that submission.
I've been down there and dealt with people on Timberline Point, and it's a challenge.
Huge challenge.
It's very similar to Circle Drive, you know, relatively small lots, poor topography as far as being able to have any accessory structures, you know, for storage and that. So it's very definitely a challenge, and I do agree that you may be seeing more because it's just, people need storage.
You know, this has nothing to do with this proposal, but, you know, I deal with storage structures more than I deal with houses. We have 50 houses this year. But tons and tons of big toy boxes. And the more toys people have, the more want for storage.
Got a pontoon in the garage, Bertie, with a lawnmower.
Yeah. Four pounds of potatoes and a two pound bag. There you go.
Crow Wing County only allows a 10 by 12 also, right? So if he was on the other side of the lake out of Breezy Point, you'd have to go to the county to get that approved, right?
Yes. The same issue would be in Crow Wing County as it is in the city of Breezy.
Right.
I feel I need to remind at least myself that we've already given Peter the approval to have both sheds.
Right.
The issue is, where does that smaller one go?
In the approval, it says separate location.
Right.
I guess if they're five feet apart, they are in separate locations technically, but they're in the high watermark, you know, which pretty much the whole lot is, you know.
Again, we're going to need to provide him some direction. I would entertain a motion.
What are the consequences if there is no motion? If he dies for lack of emotion?
We could approve, well, I think we've told Mr. Schroeder that we would approve the one 10 by 12. We would not approve the second one. The variance does say that he's allowed a second one. It's just a matter of where the location is or what's a viable location for you and Mr. Schroeder.
So if I understand it correctly, the only thing on the table here is the location of that second shed?
Correct.
Jerry, with this size of the lot, is the second location, if it did move, let's say, further back from a standpoint, is there any major difference as far as water drainage or anything like that that we would be should be concerned about?
Technically, because this lot has no setbacks or there's no building envelope, anything is a variance, any location. He could, under our ordinance, without a variance, put in a 10 by 12 storage structure. Now, he already has a 100 foot storage structure there. He could replace that at its existing location without any issues. The other issue is the fact that he is asking for a second structure. And what is an acceptable location to the planning commission? I think that's the crux of the issue.
And I guess what I'm trying to ask is, with that size lot, is anywhere else on that lot going to be any more suitable?
Well, I don't, I don't think, I think some other places on the lot would be, would not have the perception of being a water-oriented structure. I think that's, that's the crux of it. Technically, it's going to fit into that definition because there are no, there is no building envelope on this, on this lot.
I think the aesthetics, I think you did a good job of trying to hide it to make it fulfill some of the other zoning requirements. Which I think is, is nice to have that. I'm just trying to, myself, work around, is there a better place for, on that property, given the size? Even if it moved back a bit, is it going to be any better? In the end, does it make that much of a difference, given the size of the property? What are we achieving by having in a different location is kind of what I'm thinking.
In my mind, what you're achieving by have, and what my wife Leslie and I are having by putting it in a different location, to me, is not replacing the existing shed within that high-water mark. Because, you know, building it back up and straightening it up and doing all of those things. We want to get that out. It's not in the right location for lots of reasons. And so to put that smaller building, to get that little building out of there and put it back outside of the ordinary high-water line setback, I think is already a benefit to the property and to any kind of drainage that's happening off of the property. We're getting it out of that, we're getting it out of that spot, which I think is positive.
I'm hearing Mr. Schroder saying that he's going to get rid of the existing shed, and I think that whatever you do should be part of your stipulation that that has to happen.
That we're improving the current situation by removal of an existing piece and putting it in a better location.
I think that the initial application stated that it was going to be removed. If it isn't removed, then there's no reason to have this, even the bigger structure here.
I think this all started because Peter wanted like a 200-square-foot. And we said, well, 120, and we could do 120 and a smaller unit. And everybody agreed, 5-0, that that one could be at a separate location. Well, no, it is a separate location technically, but it's not either, so.
Is there room to put it?
Patrick?
In your variance, you were very clear to say, you denied the 207-square-foot that was what you just talked about. However, you were very clear to say that applicant is allowed to one 10-by-20 water-oriented structure 20 feet from the ordinary high-water mark. You then went on to say that it is allowed to have another structure, 60 square feet. And you did not stipulate that it would be a water-oriented structure or in that location. So that's where staff feels there's a separation, and it should not be that close to the lake.
I think Marcy's question is, is a really good one. Is there a better location? Or doesn't it make any difference? Are we? If we're in a different location, would we be better protecting the lake?
Is there room where that propane tank is in that corner?
When we, when we talked about that, that location is, what I shared was our parking location for the, for the property.
Remember that, yeah.
And I think, one of, one of the, one of the images that I had in my packet, I think is helpful to see. And, let's see, is that the one that fell away? What I think, what this image illustrates, I think, is, is the proximity of even something as narrow as a nine-foot shed on that property. It's, if we were to take that and flip it to the other side, my question is, what have, what have we gained? It's, it's very narrow. I don't know if that makes any sense when you're, when you're looking at that image or not.
So when you, where that propane tank is and where the house sits now, are you parked in between there?
We park right in there. And there's trees there, there's trees there. This is wide, excuse me, wide open, going all the way back to Timberline Point.
Peter, how do you use the location of the old drain field?
That will be, that will be used for parking.
Okay.
When we talked, when we talked about optional locations, I shared with the commission that we were talking about front-end parking coming in there, or that there would be a location for boat-trailer parking. And the wall doing a couple of things. One, it gets that drain field further away from the lake by five feet. And two, it provides additional protection to make sure that nobody's driving over that.
Still looking for a motion.
I'll jump in. My, my concern from day one is, my sense was, this is not a buildable lot for the intended purposes. And somewhere along the line, you just can't build on certain lots that close to the water. Therefore, I'm basically opposed to the whole thing.
However, Tracy, we've already-
I understand, I understand, therefore, I'm not going to make a motion.
So just to clarify, are we looking for a motion to deny this particular location, or how do we word what?
I, I think the motion would be agreement on our part.
Okay.
That the second shed could go where Peter proposes it. I said that badly, but does that make sense?
I think you could, you could approve a motion that the second shed be located at XYZ location. Or specify that they're, that drawing, if that's acceptable, be the acceptable location for that second building. Or you could deny a second building altogether. Or, you know, resubmit something different.
So I would make a motion that to submit a separate location due to the fact that the original discussion was that it should not be in that same proximity to the water's edge. I don't know where that other location is at this point with where parking and trailers are supposed to be. I don't have a suggestion. But I believe that, that was the intent of the discussion back on April.
Does everyone understand that motion? Could Marcy clarify for anybody?
And do we need to put in there that that other shed has to come down, the old one?
I believe that was already in there, is that correct, Patrick?
Yes, in the initial application, that the, that would be removed as part of the variance application. They would be putting up these additional, or these new.
Then do we have-
With the new sheds.
So my answer to the planning commission was, there'll be two sheds on the property, there won't be three.
Correct.
And the other one has to be down before the other two are given permits.
Okay. Did that answer your question, Lee?
Yes.
Okay. Did I see a hand up?
No, I'm just-
A second to that motion.
Second that?
Lee, you second it?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. Roger.
Where is he going to move that little one?
The existing one?
No, the little 60, 56-square-foot one. If it moves back a foot, is that okay? Just a question, you know. Because it sounds like over by the tank is out, out of the existing drain field is out. About the only place it could go is where it's sitting, right?
Well, I think you, you said that there was two other options, but you didn't want to upset your neighbor, and then you didn't want to block the other view of the corner. I don't know, I think sometimes something has to give, I mean, we all want more and more, but, you know, you kind of got to please yourself and try to please your neighbor, but I think you can please everybody.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? I'll call for the question, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same?
Aye.
Were you opposed?
No, no, I said aye, yes.
You were an aye, Marcy, you were an aye?
I was an aye.
I was opposed.
You were opposed, Tracy's opposed. I hate this. I, I will vote against the motion. So we're back to square one.
Any new motions?
Do we have another motion?
What are you guys suggesting, or?
I've already expressed my opinion, I think.
I would suggest, and it's all right with Peter, that we make the first one a little bit bigger and eliminate the second one, but that's a totally different story then, isn't it?
Well, I think then we're going kind of back to square one, where-
Yeah, that's true.
Our, our original action approved 116-square-foot, or 120.
120.
120, and Peter's proposing a 116.
So then with the two there, you would have about 180 between the two?
172, no?
Are you pondering another motion, Roger?
No.
Okay. Do we have another motion?
No.
Fundamentally, the variance gives him one shed, or actually gives him two sheds.
Two sheds, right.
And he eliminates the existing shed. So the only thing on the table is where to put it. And if you're saying that it can't be down close to the water, he can put it anywhere he wants, not close to the water. So I mean, if you do nothing, that's the way it stands.
Right.
So that's the way it stands?
That's the way you read it? Yes.
Do you agree, Jerry?
I can live with that. I, you know, I think if there's agreeable location, it should be stipulated as part of the record.
Yeah. If, if you want to specify a location, you have that, that you can do, okay? If you do nothing, he can put it anywhere he wants to, but it can't be next to the water. And he doesn't have to come back and ask permission.
It's fine with me.
That was our original intent, correct?
Right.
And essentially, that was the motion that was made. That you turned down.
I don't hear another motion, that's where it stands.
I can't vote, so.
With, with the status of, the fact that it did not pass, it reverts back to what we've already-
Exactly.
Right. But if it comes down to separate location, like I said, if he moves it back a foot, it's still in the high water, I mean, it's technically right, Jerry.
Jerry, would you remind us what makes, what is the definition of a water-oriented structure?
A 10-by-12 structure that is within the setbacks. That's an oversimplification, like, there's a definition in the ordinance that basically says it's got to be at least 20 feet from the OHW and 10 feet from the side property line. But-
We don't have that, right.
It's, the reason it was put in is because folks were using fish houses and junk-type buildings to circumvent putting something in the, in the setback. So the compromise was that they would allow one 10-by-12 water-oriented structure within that setback. This is a very difficult lot to deal with because it really, everything is within that setback. Even the house is within the setback.
So bottom line is 120 square feet?
Bottom line was that 120 square feet was allowed within the setback, close to the water.
So that would be Peter's option to enlarge the building that we've approved as a water-oriented building to make it 120 square feet?
It is already 120 square feet.
That was 116.
Well.
Yeah.
For all intents and purposes, it's 120.
Am I allowed to ask, to ask for a clarification on that point?
Pardon me, Peter?
Am I allowed to ask for a clarification on Jerry's point? You, you said within the ordinary high-water mark setback for the, for the water-oriented structure, correct?
It's allowed within the setbacks.
Within the setback from, that 20-foot setback from?
No, no, it, the minimum, the minimum setback from the OHW for a water-oriented structure is 20 feet.
Okay.
And 10 feet from the, from the side property line.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm reading here, I heard you say within, and I'm-
No, I'm not.
So I was thinking within that setback, and that's not the case.
We're not going to float you out.
No, no, that's, I just, I was, I wanted to just be clear on that point, thank you.
Are we ready to move on? Yes. Thank you, Peter. Next on our agenda is discussion of residential zoning classifications for Circle Drive neighborhood. We've discussed it-
I think you may have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Where did that land?
You're good at this.
There was a lot of talk, I just-
From what I gathered, is that I think they reaffirm staff's opinion that their intent was that that second structure should not be that close to the water. That you're still allowed to have the second structure, but you got to find a different spot for it.
Regardless of the approved variance?
Yes. That's-
No.
No.
No, no, that-
That's in accordance with the-
The approved variance says that you can have the two buildings, the two structures, okay? One can be a water-oriented structure, which means down close to the water. And then the smaller building can be anywhere on the lot, not within the water, not within the setbacks.
Well, which is what, which is what I've got.
The problem there. The problem there.
Yeah.
Problem is that there is no... The setback is the real problem.
Right.
If this lot were two-hundred-feet-deep,
Right.
he would have the ability to put a second storage structure someplace that's outside of that seventy-five-foot setback from the OHW. This lot does not have the ability to do that. Think, again, I think it's the intent was that that second structure would be allowed, but not in the location that would consider it a water-oriented structure.
Right.
That's where, and that's why I'm here tonight, because I was, it wasn't clear to me based on the way that the variance was written. And it says someplace. It doesn't define where, it doesn't divide where not.
And that's where staff was in a quandary after receiving the application, is that our recollection of the discussion and the comments that were made, I think the intent was that that second building would be allowed, but it was going to be someplace other than on the shoreline.
Yeah, that's, okay. That's why I asked for that to be reread to me, to make sure that we were all clear on that. My question then is, am I allowed to appeal this? I think you can. Meaning to the city council?
Actually, I think you have to go to district court. I'd have to check our ordinance, and every, it's the way this is set up, I haven't dealt, read that section.
Well, the issue, or the variance has already been approved.
Correct, and he wants to appeal the decision and say he wants...
Well, the first step would be to go to the city council.
Right.
That's the first step. Second step, if the council turns him down, would be to go to court. If it comes to that, yes.
Yeah, we'll have to check the procedures, but that sounds, that's one of the many options, so...
And in the meantime, can I work directly with you, Jerry, to get for that extension? Or for the variance extension?
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, that's not a problem.
This is gonna take us outside of...
No, I understand.
Not only the construction season, but...
So the variance is good for one year from the date of issuance?
Okay, I heard six months, or maybe I was remembering six months, but...
That's a building permit? You haven't obtained the building permit, but yeah, so you're good till May of next year.
Right. All he needs is a just...
We can connect up tomorrow, Friday. All right, perfect. All right.
They always call ten minutes after he leaves, and so I gotta make sure we're clear.
They limit my hours.
Okay. Discussion of residential zoning classification for Circle Drive neighborhood.
Okay. We have had some preliminary discussions, and it started with sheds. We started with sheds in the Circle Drive neighborhood and on small lots, and one of the things that the planning commission had endorsed was that we would allow sheds on small lots to be exempt from the impervious coverage requirements. Again, one-ten-by-twelve shed. These, that discussion prompted us to look at Circle Drive a little bit, and we're looking at, the Circle Drive neighborhood was the original resort, subdivided into very small lots. Three thousand square feet was probably the bigger ones. Houses that were closer to the property line, and coverage was, in some cases, was seventy percent of impervious coverage in those, in that neighborhood. The commission directed us to take a look at whether that shouldn't be possibly treated as a separate zoning district. That might have different requirements, such as setbacks, impervious coverage, minimum lot size, that type of thing. The existing neighborhood does not meet anything, it's currently zoned R3. Most of that neighborhood does not meet any of the requirements of the R3 district, and therefore, everything is considered a non-conforming use. The intent here is to have a discussion about whether it's, we should maybe relax some of those requirements in that neighborhood to allow some enhancements to the neighborhood or to the buildings. Today, just about everything that happens up there is a variance. I think one of the variances you dealt with a while back was just a deck that didn't impede any sightlines or anything, but basically was something that folks wanted. Well, they bought this property and wanted to be able to make it more livable than it really is. So that's where the discussion lies. Is it something that we want to pursue even further? I did do a, for instance, if in fact we created an R5 zone, and R5 would be a specific zone for the Circle Drive neighborhood. I didn't include the Indian Hill section that's right above the resort, but that would be something that probably could be included also. I don't intend that this type of zoning could be used any other place in the, in the community that I know of. You never know what's happened. The other thing that's happened with this neighborhood is that it used to be a neighborhood that was opened up in April and shut down in October. There are some folks now that are living there twenty-four-seven. They've drilled their own wells. They are on city sewer. And they're making them their home. So I think it's evolved, the... I think the neighborhood has evolved some from when the ordinance was adopted and when it was subdivided. And I think it has some merit to look at. Might be easier to deal with down the path. It isn't going to eliminate the need for all variance applications in that neighborhood. There's nothing that will eliminate that. There are some of those folks that are sitting on the property line that if they wanted to do something, they would have to apply for a variance because they're considered illegal non-conforming use. Actually, I think there's probably some encroachments in the neighborhood too. But it's a discussion.
Are we at the point, Jerry, where we should be recommending something to the city council?
I think that's something that you, if you're comfortable with what's in front of you, then I think you could make that...
If I can?
Response?
Patrick?
So one of the things that was talked about at the little last city council meeting, as Tom Lilly mentioned, is the fact that we talked about ten-by-twelve sheds there. And one of their points was that the public hearing should actually be held at the planning commission level. So Jerry and I have talked about that, and that is, we're technically planning for November. I mean, this winter's not gonna make any difference, but November at the earliest. So making recommendations to the city council, they thought the ten-by-twelve was okay, so same kind of process would work. It sounds like the city council's gonna recommend it back to you guys to ultimately hold that public hearing. And so Tom can make an update. I'm not sure if you wanted an actual recommendation, Tom, do you think? Or do you want to have it...
Well, I think the process would be that they would draft the ordinance, and then the city council approves it. Right?
It is the, on page one, Jerry prepared the resolution recommending amendment to storage sheds. Now, would that, if we were to recommend that to the city council, would that be a step in the direction to get it resolved?
So two issues. You've already done the ten-by-twelve, and so this is a discussion of the R5 zoning district. So go back another page or two. Or go forward, I guess. So on the screen, I'm showing the R5 discussion. And that's what the question was asked, was should we make a recommendation to the city council? And what I'm hearing from Tom is that yes, and then they'll decide who should hold a public hearing.
Are we ready to do that in the form of a motion?
I had brought up one time, why do they have to be so big? Ten-by-twelve, some of those lots can't even hardly have a ten-by-twelve shed on.
I think you're right. The issue is, especially in that neighborhood, if...
Does cut down on the clutter.
It cuts down the clutter, it makes everything look better. The issue is, these folks have no place to put their stuff. Do you want to make these people come in and apply for a variance for a ten-by-twelve shed, or a five-by-six shed, or whatever it is? You want them to spend two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, wait for sixty days, almost sixty days, to get approval for something that may or may not happen?
True.
But yet, it's an enhancement to the neighborhood. I think it's a convenience for the general public or the property owners. We're running into this issue down on Birchwood and in this area where there have been some small houses built that are have a single-car garage and are at the twenty-five percent impervious coverage maximum. So it's not only the Circle Drive neighborhood, it's also some of the smaller neighborhoods in the R3 zone.
So I guess it would be better just to leave it at ten-by-twelve? And some people, I drove through there today, some have eight-by-ten, some are like six-by-eights, and some maybe ten-by-twelve?
We used the ten-by-twelve because that was with the ordinance, that was the definition of a shed.
Right.
That's ten-by-twelve or less.
And if we say ten-by-twelve and the lot just cannot support it, that does not give any type of approval to say anything else. If they can't support it, they can't support it.
No. You're just approving a shed, per se.
Now, would it have to be a certain distance from the cab, you know, the house, cabin, whatever?
Technically, today, a shed that's ten-by-twelve or less, according to our ordinance, can be allowed three feet from one property line, three feet from the rear end, three feet from the side of the property. It wouldn't be allowed in the front setback. And that's on any lot.
So what we would be recommending to the city council is the proposed language to create an R5 zone?
Yes. With a specific neighborhood.
Do we have a motion?
Mike, I guess my concern is this, so if they're gonna put a ten-by-twelve structure, and then pretty soon it turns into a bunkhouse or something like that, or...
It's supposed to not be for habitation.
Right.
There's a few of them around.
Yeah. Just wanted to point that out.
Anyone care to make a motion?
Make a motion that we change, have an R5? Bring it up to the, what, you have to bring it up to the city council? Is that what?
So essentially, Roger, you're recommending this language?
Yeah, it looked good. I was kind of doubtful on the ten-by-twelve, but now Jerry talked me out of that, so...
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second discussion. Tracy?
No.
Lee?
No.
Marcy? Roger?
Should help solve some problems.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same? Motion passed. Well, we move forward. Open forum number two. Yes. You can open and close open forum number two. Other items that need discussion?
Again, my general comment, to me, there, I don't know what we really do about it, but there are just some lots that are not buildable. And it seems like what we're doing is we're allowing people to buy these lots or get these lots, and then trying to figure out a way to do something that we really didn't want them to do. And I don't know how you stop it.
Well, I think to answer your question, a lot that is not buildable will not be issued a building permit. What we're talking about, especially in this case, Timberline Point, these are lots that had already been built on a long time ago, before we even had these requirements. And yes, it is a non-built, today, it would be a non-buildable lot because it has a negative building envelope, okay? So...
But then they ought to live with what they have.
It's basically a non-conforming lot, and you can have a variance on a non-conforming lot because of the practical difficulty of the lot is too small. That's what the variance process is for. Tom Inger used to say that a variance is permission to break the law, and that's what they're doing. That's what they're asking permission for because of circumstances beyond their control. The lot was originally plotted basically for a little five-by-six fishing shed, and it got bigger, and that is, that's just the cold hard fats.
But, Tom, would you agree, though, that, I mean, what they're, to Tracy's point, I believe, is that they're allowed to rebuild what is currently existing as a non-conforming structure? Say it's a twenty-by-twenty structure?
Right, on the same footprint. They can't expand. Right.
So then the question is, why would a variance be needed to expand what's already been working for forty, fifty years? Is that a fair statement, Tracy?
I think so, yes. Very do, definitely.
They would not be able to expand, okay? But the variance that was asked for was to put an accessory structure, a shed, okay? That's not expanding the original building.
Correct, correct.
But it is expanding the structures that are on the original non-conforming lot so that it will be even more of a variance.
And that's what the variance process is for.
And that's what I'm opposed to.
It underlines the importance of a planning and zoning commission. It makes our job challenging, but also says that it's really important.
Right, and...
And it's also, I believe, from the last, I don't know whether you call it the long-range planning that was done, I don't know whether it was considered completed or not, but anyway, that we were working on for a couple of years while you were still the mayor. The feedback I got from the community was, they also felt like we were allowing too many variances, and the community didn't want us to continue with that method of operation, or at least allowing variances.
Unless they own one of those lots.
So...
You had mentioned that before, Tracy, a couple times, in that when you did that comprehensive plan, that was brought up, that we give too many variances. That's why they come for the variance, right?
I either need to take a two-minute break so we can initialize the disk or wrap up the meeting. And I, I'm okay with either or. I'm just, it's a good discussion, but I kinda have to initialize the disk, otherwise it.
Any, anything else?
No.
If not, I'll adjourn the meeting.
Jerry had a question.
Oh, sorry, Jerry.
I, I put together some of the latest correspondence and, and some pictures of the phone mic. Cause I know somebody's gonna.
Do we need to break, Peter?
And I give this to you for your creating enjoyment and pleasure.
Thank you.
It's just an update.
Is it gonna get it done?
Partially done, but not completely done.
Oh, wow.
Getting completely done till next spring.
By the way, thank you, whoever included the population listing, that was most interesting.
And, you know, I've, I've physically been there. I, I've tried to figure out where in the world, where in God's name is he going to make a beach? It's hard enough to stand vertically, anyplace.
That's what's.
Let's see it one second. All the walls.
Yeah, that's what actually started this whole thing.
Are we gonna discuss this, or are we adjourned?
Oh, no, we're.
No, it was just for your information at this point in time. If you'd like to bring it up at a future meeting, we could do that, but this was just for information at this time.
Do you have a question, Tracy?
No, no.
Could I go out there and look at?
You take your life in your own hands when you do.
Yes, with staff. So that we can arrange an appointment to let them know that we're coming out there.
That's the standard procedure for, we, we should all understand that. We shouldn't be tramping on people's property without permission, correct?
You wouldn't want that on your own property.
Exactly.
It's just respectful.
All right, I will not be at the next meeting.
Will the next meeting be the second Tuesday? Because Election Day is city council day, right?
No, there's no elections.
There's no election this year.
Okay.
It, there, I shouldn't say that, there are some odds.
There are some elections, but.
Year, city elections, but not for city of Breezy Point.
Okay. So we're on for the second Tuesday?
Yes.
Yeah. Meeting adjourned.